Used to be planning.
Yeah, they need another foot of snow.
Yeah.
I was just up today.
Yes, no, we had a mountain, you're getting it.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be a bang up.
Started out fine.
Yeah. They've had some rains. I don't know about all the way at the top, but at debates for sure.
Yeah.
And then with all the. Skid traffic over all. Yeah, kind of speed out.
Smash taters.
A little bit of that.
It's not quite corn yet.
Yeah.
Downloaded what it's shocking and mushy. All parts of the. Just let off my big roof the other day. Okay. Alright, so. Alright, I'm gonna call the uh. Plan Commission to order, so the meeting's being held in fifteen hundred Highway two, San Point, Idaho. First floor conference room. Uh, and we have as a first item of business. We have the. We're going to be stand. Ready to give. One nation. The needed is one. Have any announcements?
Uh, the only announcement I had is we had a resignation on the on the plan commission, so commission filters resigned as of last year. We have now two openings for anyone that's interested in joining the planning commission, there's three and several spots, so. Uh, it allows it's a lot of work and um we'll continue to advertise that on our website and we'll probably publish it either again in the future. Today, we've seen we've received two applicants for that, so. The board hopefully will appoint somebody in the next couple of weeks to the previous agency and then uh we'll we'll continue to. Recruit for the.
She knows an opening.
Yeah, so what we don't have tonight, what we had on the agenda was. Discussion on on housing, we had not received the housing component, so that's not gonna be. We're having to discuss, I would advise to check that more as we assign that to somebody that is previously assigned.
If a comment.
I'd have to look, I don't know.
There was a question.
What district it was in, I wanna say it's District Three, but I could do that.
I, yeah. I think it's Chapter Three.
Oh, the first one?
Yeah.
Oh, first one was three, one was polished, when the new one just vacated.
Alright, so let's go to the uh, thank you for that, Jake, uh, that's it, uh, calendar. Approval of the minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty two.
We need to do a roll of Allen.
Oh, yeah. Now, we need to find out who's here. Well, it's right here. Okay. Commissioner Frank.
Dave's here.
Commissioner Davis. Alright, so we have four rests, that is, uh, you know, we have five uh. Commissioners now since Mr. Phil has resigned, um. So that's a four. So we'll go to the approval of the minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty two. Any objections? There are no objections. Minutes are approved. Go to the action items, which is the first action item, I guess the only action item is file AM zero zero one nine dash two two. Our county comprehensive plan component update. And we have two schools facilities and transportation and transportation. Bona County Planning Commission is recommending maybe. An amendment to the existing Bona County plans comprehensive plan by updating school's facilities. And transportation. And transportation components as two different components. Friday code section sixty seven sixty five oh eight, energy's local energy's buying out. Alright, so we'll deal with the school facilities and transportation, we have a. We have a staff report, sorry.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Swati from Bonner County Planning Department. We are hearing for, we are here for the hearing of file uh AM zero zero one nine dash twenty two. Comprehensive plan text amendment for. School facilities and transportation and transportation components. So it was duly noted noticed in the newspapers and duly noticed to the to the cities and agencies. As required by the state code. So in general, these are the agencies that were notified of this request. And we received only one comment from Bonner County Roden Bridge Department. Uh, all these other agencies that replied with no comments and we did not receive any public comments till January fifteenth. So the implementation component was first adopted in two thousand two. The transportation component was adopted in two thousand two as well. There was an amendment made to the implementation component in. Two thousand five. And the school facilities and transportation component was adopted in two thousand thirteen. So what the planning commission here, as you all know, has had several workshops and. Uh, is having a hearing today for these components and this is the order in which. These components were reviewed. So on October eighteenth, both of these components were reviewed by the planning commission on November one again. There was a review. And there was a uh review on November fifteenth with that included public comments. And we are having a hearing today. So these are the minimum. Standards. Which. The update is supposed to meet. And it meets these minimum standards. I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff?
Do we think we need to change anything in the transportation one to address the comment from Bona County Roads and Bridges?
I can pull that comment up here.
I just read it, I hadn't seen it before, basically, they say, I guess we had said that. Developers building new roads should contact planning to see if there's any. Archaeological sites that they need to be aware of, and his his question was, does that apply just to developers or does that apply to Bona County Roads and Bridges themselves? If they're building road.
I would think so.
Unless we have a map that note that. Shows all the archaeological sites, I don't think anybody in Bonner County Planning Department would know. Where those sites are, and I don't know how to how we would be guiding the public or. Any developers.
Well. Don't we have a list of some of those in the? Special site section?
Um, we're supposed to.
I don't know if it's complete or accurate, but.
Yeah, that's just it. Well, we can know, we can go to that, yeah, that was one of the, you said, one of. One of the headings.
Right, right. I don't know if it came, probably mostly came from the last complaint, but. Didn't uh, somebody from the Historical Society have some input on that? When we were originally.
Put on the.
Historical, historical sites, okay.
I believe. And I, you know. I think we uh we eliminated those. Uh, values.
Well, coming on the other hand, if there's if there's no good source of. To understand where those sites are. I mean, that's the other alternative is to remove that requirement.
Also, I mean. If roads are to be built in those areas, would they have some different standards?
No, in. I wonder, chapter four in the transportation component talks about road building. It says all roads built in the county by, well. Within the county that received federal funding. That's a, that is mainly the county. And. The state. So, and it was just an acknowledgement, so. And Roden Bridge knows that, that if they're weren't using federal money, they've got to meet federal requirements. And state requirements, and the feds just push it on the state. So. Yes, doesn't need to be in the cop land. That Road and Bridge has to do it, but that's certainly implied here because that's what it is. Even though this doesn't say it, a private developer developing a road does not have to meet the national environmental policy. So. If something gets found, it's their duty to report. To the state historic preservation. Well, we do have, you know, it's been a while since I've seen, we looked at the. Special area of sites, but. Yeah, there is a component of policy.
So are you suggesting, Don, that? The only time that requirement applies is. If it's. If it's in general, if it's for county building the road as opposed to a private developer?
Yeah.
And you, they know how to do, and they know to do it anyway?
Yeah, I think so, because. And it's. Was. It was mentioned this way in the in the existing column. So I brought that language in. Did you do this one? Yeah. The special areas? No.
No, there was this.
The transportation. Chapter four in transportation road. What I added was the second part. Because, I mean, a developer can make a county road. So that's why it says county and private development roads to be constructed within county jurisdiction, so. No contact, and here's where the other one, it comes into the special site, so it kind of cross references. That other component. If the county knows about it somehow, fine, if not. Sign of end of story. But it. It's a kind of. Which we didn't want to push it. Didn't want to leave it hanging. Then we get a simple, that's a responsible, we'll leave it out. But it doesn't necessarily imply that everybody's gotta do a. E N I S or something on the property that over. I'm still looking. I wrote a bridge comment. Which page on your, on your test?
This is very last page.
Very last one, same goes to four, page seven.
It's on the screen here.
You know, I'm not sure actually in reading, now that I'm looking at. What's in the. Proposed update. I'm not sure, it's unclear. Um, because the second paragraph in. Yeah. In that chapter says county and private development roads to be constructed within county jurisdiction, so I think that covers both. Roads being constructed by the county and roads being constructed by private developers. Which is what Matt seemed to have a question about.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Can be spelled out clear, right?
It could be a little bit. Yeah. If if we wanted to.
Well, that's, I didn't make it clear than that, county roads to be constructed within.
Yeah, I think, I think it's pretty clear, but.
I think it's pretty clear, and it's not really the planning department that.
I guess that's another question.
Yes, we know it's the State Historical Preservation Office. They. Road and Bridge. Is under their own charge. They're not. I mean, this has been a debatable thing for years. Does Road and Bridge fall under the comprehensive plan? It would, it would seem to say so here. But wouldn't they, you know, with this, with this statement, but um, why wouldn't they? They're not this, well. Is a. Since there is a transportation component, and it says list out the county roads. You know, which is, which is, that's why I reference the. The county's. Long range transportation plan with self to roads and what they are and where they are, all that stuff. So here was the statement that was in the existing cop plan that talked about. Historic preservation and special sites relative to roads. So here it is, it's just kind of a. Bring it into the present. Now, I mean, it's interesting because. For instance, state road, state rights of way are not subject to county probably into going or don't. Either a state road, state. Our county roads. We've got their process, they got their own funding source, they've got, you know, that it's not, it's not a land use and a land use regulation. With no specific land use regulations that apply to the county building or maintaining road. Well, I think that it's clear enough. I think it's alright. And I don't, I don't know that it it really affects. Again. If they're, if they're using federal money, they're already under that cap, we've got to have some element of review. And be aware, if they turn over something, it has to be reported to the state, the private state historic preservation office. That's state code. So. So it doesn't hurt to have it in here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a better place to send them than Bona County Planning?
It's not, thanks to the state of historical preservation. Well, it.
But the second paragraph. So the first paragraph addresses roads that are built with federal funding, which is one situation. The second paragraph. To me, kind of, I call it all other roads, because it's county, maybe except for state state roads, I guess, but. It's county and private development roads within the county jurisdiction, and in that case, we're sending them to Bona County Planning. Should be sent them to the. State Historical Preservation Office instead?
The other ones that would have the information.
Yeah.
They. Yeah. Good question, I.
Or is it to become a two-step thing where they come to planning and then. Planning does some research and. Maybe talks to state highway.
Again, we had that for the reason of us, I don't, we had in the special sites. We debated it whether to keep the list of places. Like, I don't think we did. It's not. I just might just look at, doesn't seem very specific. No, it's Jim. And but it. I remember, right, it says similar words to this. It's important. And there's avenues to pursue it. But. It's not. I don't know, but fall short of a mandate to do it, or. Or even in, in the building. Well, what would you suggest, Swari?
State historical reservations. Because we, yeah, because we would, I I don't see a way of being able to guide the public as to. If there is an archaeological site nearby or. If the regulations for building roads would be different there. Yeah, I. I don't know, there is a way to do that.
Alright, so what we do is we can say. State historical preservation, whatever it is.
If that is where we are pulling our. Data for uh special areas or sites, then. I think it only makes sense that. Uh. Anybody who wants to construct roads in those areas should go to the original agency, public agency who put out that list. And not to a secondary agency, which may or may not have the updated list or data.
Okay, well, can we change it, Bona County Planning to state historical? Makes sense to me. What's the name of that?
State historical reservation.
Officer is what the O stands for. Yeah, but we've, we've uh, we've already made a acronym out of it, so it's just, so S H S H P O versus following, yeah. So we could pick Bona County planning out, but S H P O in here.
Okay.
Well, I think you you uh, you leave the last sentence in there, when you know. I know archaeological findings. That if they find or to be immediately reported, so that's okay.
Yeah.
So we got a question from the floor here. So I can't believe it, Matt, you have a question?
So, John, John, when you go and you're after that link, it goes to county and private.
Yep.
You're the.
I am.
When you say development roads, you are that volume rolls?
This is a road. A road that. We have yet to define logging as a development.
He's saying that not.
No, it is not defined as development anywhere. We we need that in there, we could just say, we only have part of the roads to be constructed, right?
I I, that 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 might question, you know, uh, we're not logging right now, but through the journey. Many of those.
Yeah.
And now those roads, and then there, you know, they're on a tail or. And should go back and revolve, which would back up. Do we have to?
Well, if, no, because. All of that falls into the Forest Practices Act. And the Forest Practices Act has a similar thing here, you discover something on your road that you're developing, you've got to go talk to Chip. Sure. And it's simple, so. And that's not. Again, logging so far has not been included as a land use. So it doesn't fall in the land is planning. Um, so I would say no. But I, what I meant was. A road that is going to be improved in the development. If you do, constructed in development, well, that was developed. We had this discussion.
We did.
Another use of development.
Yeah, it was one of those things we said. We ought to define it sometime.
Yeah, right. Well, we could put this around and say, I'm actually be constructed within a development. How much do that, okay?
Well, I just wanna make sure to assume possibly the first one, if you need to contact a state agency. You want to put in a development road. Part of getting an encroachment from the county road, or you say you need to contact the state. And then there's, there's no deadline when you're near the state.
Yeah. Well, I, and again. One thing that we haven't discussed here is. This particular, where to go. So the word shall, there is.
Shall.
Shell contact, so. We've already heard from upstairs, they don't like the word shallow in the cop land, it should be should. Um, that really softens it, it should. But that's what we're hearing from upstairs when we pass this and gone. To take that into consideration, I think, they can change it, yeah. We're trying to anticipate what the board's gonna do. Yeah, that's losing proposition, yeah, it's. Well, it is now, we totally know now, especially now. Especially if we listen to the means, yeah, well. There hasn't been a. Big meeting on any of this stuff by the president, so. Yeah, we had it on, have it this week. You should, you should listen to it.
It's rather informative.
Oh, I didn't know that. I didn't hear that. Very interesting, okay, alright. Alright. Well, let's not spend. Uh, so really, the only two issues is one is we're gonna take Bona County planning out. Um, and then we're, you know, we can, we can flip this around and say development. Probably our private roads to be constructed within a development. Okay, now are we good with this? Yeah.
I think you still, we're not hearing any of those in the public comment.
Yeah, yeah, we will, but I think we're gonna get.
Which, which, which sentence would be changed?
And the last paragraph, the first sentence.
Okay, we took out Bona County planning and can change it to the state historical preservation.
We're achieving this.
Yeah.
S H P O.
Yeah, what's the other change?
That's it, the same sentence, where it says county and private development roads, we're gonna say county and private roads. Being instructed within a development, yes.
Being constructed within development.
No, that that makes it pretty clear, it's not logging roads, maybe. Yeah, that would be better. Alright.
I, I got a question, I live on a um, public road privately maintained, does. Does that need its own separate? Preservation in here? Or is that? That would be considered a private road?
It's a, no, it's a public road.
It'd be a public road.
Well, it's a county, it is.
Not a county road.
Well, it's a public road. It's still a public road, but it's privately maintained, so it would fall under. It would fall under this.
I just didn't know if we needed to. Nah, I think. Just saying county and private was enough, or if we needed this. Have something else.
Why isn't it a county road?
Oh.
Is it, is it a county road that the county just decided they're not gonna maintain?
No, it's a, it's a.
Or is it a private road?
No, it's a public road that we have to privately maintain, but anybody can drive on it.
We can dedicate it right away. I think that probably is a county road.
Well, huh.
Technically.
Alan.
Technically, it is, it's just privately maintained, it's been dedicated to the public.
Yeah, well, okay, so I'll, I take that back on, it's not family main thing.
Yeah. Dedicated to the public, therefore it belongs to Bona County. Maintained by the, by the, right, yeah, they just haven't accepted the main, so. Alright, so uh. Let's go to any public comments, we have a public. Input. As we go, those who approve these. Posits. Those. Those who are neutral, those opposed. Okay. Saying none. Back to the commission, what's the commission's desire? We have a motion to recommend these two components to the board.
And for the record, we don't have a, any, we don't have one for this.
Mike still hasn't. You mean this?
No.
So.
So, um, I'll make a motion. Mr. Frankenbach, um. I moved to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of this amendment to the Bona County Comprehensive Plan. File AM zero zero one nine dash two two. Update to the school facilities and transportation and transportation components. Finding that it is in accord with the requirements of Idaho Code section sixty seven dash sixty five oh eight. And the procedures set forth in Idaho Code section sixty seven dash sixty five oh nine is enumerated in the following findings of fact and conclusions of law. And based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the following findings of fact to conclusions of law as written, this action does not result in taking a private property.
Okay, sir, second.
Well, second is trying.
All those in favor, question on the question, should we, should we in the motion? Acknowledge the changes that were made to.
Yeah, it's the amended version.
I think you said that, yeah.
You did, but we didn't change the findings of fact or.
No. Okay, then. I mean. Alright, all of them favor, I.
I.
Both. Yes, yeah, I was like. Alright, we'll go to uh. The workshop items, and the first uh three items here are all. Open for public comment and discussion. We had agriculture on a number of different occasions. So. So. I think we should deal with agriculture last, um. Let's go to public airports. Okay. Been a while since we talked about this, I know we had some issues, but I can't. I completely recall that they were. I completely recollecting that they were.
Were there some issues on the? Ability to develop. Within a certain, or according to the approach at.
Make the smaller. You know, we, I know we were discussing, um. Whether to put some language in here about, uh. Possible future use of the airports and, um. And whether there should be something in there to, more than cool about. Uh, possible. Uh, navigation easements above their property. And, uh. I've had time to consider that since we need last. Talked about this and I would think. You don't think we should? I don't think we should. And the reason is, um, I think it was brought up last time by. Matt that, uh. You know, if we, if we, if it appears that we're putting restrictions on property, that could be a taken. There's even some, some base law on that. Uh, so. You don't want to get carried in a position where that might be, um.
I don't think you have it in here.
No, it wasn't, but. What is in here? And, and it kind of boils down to same as a lot of these, these components where somebody else. At a state level. Is looking into this. Period, not the, not the county. So it all refers back to. I T D Arrow or F A A. To be the experts in the field. So everything is directed at them. The county will notify. I T D Arrow and F A A of any. Any development that's proposed. There's some directly affect the airport, which is. Really Kavanaugh Bay and, and the. Forest Service. Cause the other two, uh, Priest River and Sandpoint are totally within. City limits of those two cities. But the, uh. Yeah, but like, but they're county airports. They are. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna have any land use jurisdiction over the airport. Or the, uh, they are within the cities of. Priest River and, and Sandpoint. Their land use code covers totally the airport and the surrounding area. Outside of the city limits of both Sandpoint, Priest River. And then the other two, Kavanaugh Bay and, and the Forest Service, the flight path. Is what's of concern, but that needs to be. Protected. For safety of everybody on the ground and in the air. So again, when something is in those flight paths, as these pictures depict. The, the, I forget now, the dimension of five thousand feet, I think. Those, those, any development there needs to be reviewed against that. Flight path. I'm forgetting all the terms. Yeah, but that's F A A and Idaho standards, right? We don't need to put it in here from the county. Well, it's just. Making everybody aware.
You have it in here. Yes.
It's right there. And it's on page. The other thing is kind of an anomaly here is that, uh, both Priest River Airport and Sandpoint have their own master plans. Yeah, so I'm not sure. What we're supposed to be doing with this. Well, and those, those master plans. Uh, having renewed them, they talk about the flight paths and protecting the, the different zones and everything. And it's just acknowledging. Uh, acknowledging that and the fact that they extend out into the county unincorporated county area. Not just immediately around the airport. So like I said, these, these maps, so they showed. Show the flight path, um, by those same definitions of five thousand feet on the approach. At a certain elevation and so forth, you know, those, those big, um. Graphics that are in the, uh, the, they use hand up to airports. Talks all about the. Safe approaches and so forth.
Right, but I don't think you're suggesting here, we started to cause that. The county is gonna put any restrictions on them. Other than the F A A and Idaho standards.
No, yeah, it's just, right, so it's, it's again, like other things. Contacting. In, in, as a request to review. Any. The county's responsibility is to look to see, based on these approach paths. If a development is proposed within that approach path. That triggers, uh, adding I T D Arrow and F A A in the, um. Notice of application list. And if they respond, they respond. If they don't, they don't. Most, most of these aren't going to be of any effect because they're not proposing something that's going to stick up vertically into that airspace. Right.
However, it's a pretty tall building.
It would be. Um, the other part is. It, it's the, the list that I T D Arrow created to say. County and city don't allow these things in these air paths such as. Uh, landfills, if you can have lots of seagulls and stuff coming up from there and, and other places like, uh, nature preserves, where you're gonna have ducks and geese and stuff flying up into the air path. That's again, that's something that the county has to watch for, so.
Yeah, so is the language that we have in the proposed update here enough? To queue. Planning? Then when you get a. A development request in, in that approach zone. That, that you would know to add F A A and I T D Arrow on distribution for that? I mean, it's a.
That's a good question.
You can make a drawing of this area, right?
Yeah.
So many feet from the airport and so forth, but.
Kind of like a little overlay.
Right, a, a map overlay that would say, anything that happens in this area, we just know, we have to notify F A A and I T B Arrow to get there and a little. Is that, is that something we need to do? Or, or is this language enough? You guys will, will go do that.
See, that would be.
Five years ago, five years from now, when we've all forgotten. Somebody wants to build something in there, or you're gonna remember to do that. That's my question.
There's nothing in the existing. Uh, transportation component, which does include, uh, airports in that existing one from two thousand seven. That, uh. That acknowledged it. So I was struggling with. I was, I was wanting to make a recommendation for an impulse. So we'll keep that in mind when we go back and revise any, any revision to policies or goals or objectives.
We don't have goals, objectives and policies to.
There's no, yeah, there's nothing, yeah, so that we have to.
When you see, if you really want to protect that airspace, some kind of overlay, so, right? So that's where the leads the language regulation, I would say. When we're getting to that, if, if it's really that major concern, we develop some kind of overlay zone for those areas designated.
It certainly could be in the land use department.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I think referencing that, or even, even here. No, I guess it doesn't, it isn't necessary to put something here. This should be covered, uh, recommendation here, this should be covered, the land use component as an overlay or something. It could be. Yeah, and, and it really. That's, um. The text describes enough about the protection of airspace. But it's lacking the next step. Okay, therefore. The county. Needs to establish, uh, what do I call it? Overlay zone, not a overlay zone. That's a wrong word, and that's very specific. Uh. Overlay mapping or something that depicts the airspace. Uh, flight paths, uh, approach and departure airspace.
You mean?
Something along with it.
Do we want to include any of these goals, policies, objectives? And we, we have, we haven't done this in other components, right? We could make a note of it that we need to go with the components. We come back and add that and just draft it as a. Potential policy for now and then.
Yeah, they, based on our past discussions, I didn't go that far.
Right, exactly.
Because we decided we weren't gonna go there now, because we'd be. Pick and choose and all. Well, I think the concern was that if we put. The same goals and policies, the goals, objectives, policies in both places, and one gets changed.
I just want to be consistent. I'd rather keep it as a note. And draft some potential policies again tonight, and then we can keep it for the next update to where.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think we should be consistent.
Yeah, all right, so, um, we have any comments on the. Public airports? Matt, no comments?
Yeah.
Well.
We missed your opportunity. And I, and I was just kind of curious because in, in the, in the Idaho ready to take that guy. One case that the attorney general put under is called Rourke versus City of Caldwell. And here's what it says, this is a summary of the Idaho attorney general. Idaho Supreme Court held that certain type of restrictions with, which are used on proper, private property adjacent to an airport. It was limited to, say, agriculture uses or single family dwellings. Was an unconsequential taking at no condition with provided. The court held that that north property right in reasonable airspace above his land cannot be taken for public use. Without reasonable compensation. And so. I, I, I'm thinking back on when we, and I think you were there too, we were there, at the Sable Subcommittee, we were talking about the, uh, prefer, preferred route for the. The highway interstate is going to finish.
Hmm.
So. The discussion was, well, should we go ahead and include those maps? And the answer was no, because we don't know for sure what it's gonna do. And also that creates a stigma. On those properties. Um, and is, someone can claim what they refer to as inverse condemnation. And so if you're putting a stigma on a piece of property, whether it's a freeway or highway, or in your airspace. We gotta be very careful. So obviously.
I don't think we're doing that here. No. And it's all that's with legislation.
Yeah.
Basically, we're doing a side act again and say. The area of an airport, you know, you've got. Something's the idealist.
Yeah, the reality is that people aren't gonna be allowed to build things that are taught that intrude into that space.
Well, they, they may not be able to, but because of that, that, that little stick out of the bottle sticks, since that's been taken away.
It's already been taken away, is what I'm saying.
Oh, no, it hasn't. It, it has to be prompted.
I would agree with that.
Navigation.
They, they have to be each of the.
At what, at what high? Above ground level.
It just says reasonable. And that's what I was saying.
And that's what I was thinking when you read that. There's, there's a lot of wishy washy words in there.
And reasonable has been.
Because, because what I think is if we draw these maps and you get, you get. Far enough away from the airports that were to dawn's point outside the city limits. So we're into the county. Area of jurisdiction. I think you're gonna find that we're talking about heights that are beyond what's reasonable.
Yeah.
Right, because it starts.
More than two.
Yeah, it starts at two fifty.
But. It also starts at a flat plane from the airport. Hmm, now, how's the terrain go? If the train goes up, you're already in that zone. First, it's around, around a military base that, you know, that has a lot of jets going into it.
Yeah.
They have had to take land going back on the whole approach and departure routes, right? Because of noise, not because they're gonna ready to build this. But, but still, so this came up with. Port Lane Airport versus County Airport in, within the city of, of Hayden. And Hayden, uh, Hayden Canyon subdivision. Was proposed up off Old Government Way. It is up a hill. In the flight path of the airport. And I haven't chased it down to see what the result was, but that thing. Was the county at first admitted because the airport manager said. You're gonna build stuff up there in the flight path. And it's within that vertical elevation because of the rising land. Where the subdivision was gonna be. You need to make a pass, so they said, make a swath through there. Well, nobody talked about takings, not that I remember. Uh, but it was a heated issue for ten years in, in Cooney County. I don't know what the status of it is now. It's no subdivision. Apparently, the owners didn't talk to an inmate or. Yeah, I mean, it's, um. You know, if, if that's the case, and that's what happens, I mean, my goodness, think of all the airports around the country. If they had to go start buying up. You know, that far out, five thousand feet alro, or ten thousand feet on a, on a jet runway is ten thousand feet. That's the F A A requirement. Ten thousand feet out, then you do your vertical thing and width thing as well. It's twenty five hundred feet wide. That cold goes out.
At the end, at the end of it.
Yeah. Yeah, but, yeah.
You can look at most airports. That are commercial airports. They have that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah. They didn't, believe me, they did. Look at L A, L A definitely has it. Orange County for sure has it. All, all the, all the folks that I'm familiar with. Whether they, you know, should we get, it's historical at this point, but I don't know if they paid to do it or. Yeah, that's the thing, that's what I'm saying, it's a. I, I'm sure in the case of L A, they did. And they're still paying. And that's basically noise. They, they're sued personally. Yeah. As is Orange County. All right, so any other comments on this? I don't think we've, uh, ventured into, uh. Anything that would require it, we get taken. Just make a big note. Yeah, we, we, we gotta, we gotta deal with the goals, objectives, policies, you know. And I think we can deal with some of this in that. Cause that's really what they look at. Yeah, it's, it should, it should, well, then, yeah, that should be the go to place. All right, so, uh. Trying to get through. I think we've had all public comment, so. Let's go to population. Is there any further discussion about population?
We, no changes on airports, right? Right. Are we ready to send that to, or come back with a public hearing on that?
If you're ready for a public hearing on that, I think we are.
That, yeah, I want to make sure that was clear before we close it out.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, okay. Again, well, I mean, I, both of this. All came directly from. Through the census. Or came from Department of Labor, in some instances. Any public comment, Bonn? There you go. I'm sure. I wish the missionaries would. Look at our meetings and see how much public comment.
Yep.
This is, this has been posted on our website since our last meeting. Is, and once we're moved to open a public comment, we post this. And receive any written comment as well, but I don't think we've got anything yet.
Everybody okay with it as it is? Yeah, I think so. I, sorry. The only thing I'm, I'm looking at. The last page of text is page thirteen. Where, as the very last bullet is area of city impact. Jake, what's, what's the latest with? Talking to the cities about ACIs?
So I have a meeting later this month, I believe, the. Twenty fourth, it could be next week. I have it on my calendar, with, uh, City of Sandpoint to start the process to updating the E C I. I know the, their initial goal is to greatly reduce their areas of the impacts mapping, um. I think they're also going to talk with, uh, Cooney and Honor A, and so we've made some progress. I know. Their, their plan, planning and zoning commission has made some comments or suggestions as to have staff start working on this, so. Kind of in our first steps. With this round of administration, right? I know. Uh, Milton and other previous staff members have met on a monthly basis with other cities and counties. It never resulted in anything. I know there's a couple of drafts, changes, but. Um, nothing ever been, nothing that's been adopted, so.
It's, it seems like what's been in the paper the last month. City of Sandpoint. They, I think I, I hope I read it right, the mayor's. Thing in the paper. About expanding.
Hmm, I, I read that as, I read that as expanding. The city.
With, with sending the city.
I think what he said is, it's, if Sand, Sandpoint's gonna deal with their housing issue, you're not gonna do it with. I think what he said is, it's if Sam Sandpoint's going to deal with their housing issue, you're not going to do it within the current. Yeah. Area of the city because it's filled out essentially. So we need to start doing plans to be able to develop. In the ACI and he was talking about infrastructure, mainly sewer and so on and so forth, to to be able to develop the infrastructure so that can be developed. So it's interesting to hear. He's also maybe at the same time saying, I want I want to reduce. Size of the ACI.
That's what I think.
And then maybe that makes sense. I mean.
Make it more reasonable of a projection because it goes pretty far out.
Yeah, well, it does. That that was the comment three or four years ago as we looked at it. Samuel Lee, I mean, these things are old. They were, everybody did pie in the sky boundaries. Not anywhere within, and the proof is in the pudding because it was supposed to be according to state code. Reasonable uh areas that you could, or it's the areas that you could grow into in the reasonable future. Well, the reason the future has passed. Because that was twenty years ago, thirty years ago. And nothing has happened as the one annexation of any consequence in all that time with any city. So. That's, I don't know, it it doesn't really. But here it's just, it's just talks about. Well, it talks about current agreements. Yes. They haven't been changed, but so I mean, if there's a. By little in the way of thoughtful regional planning, or even immediate future less, much less to ten or twenty. So I, I mean, it's an okay statement. It's just. Yeah.
Well, but to me, the last sentence in that paragraph is probably the operative sentence that we should be looking at.
Yeah, accounting and cities should.
Let's engage and let's get reasonable ACIs defined is what I would, how I would interpret that.
Yeah. And whether. Maybe I think that's actually a carryover from the current. I think it is. It's all, you know, apparently this has been a problem for quite a while. Since the seventh, since it was first. But there's no. Some of the counties in the state and cities have. Put in their comprehensive plan, specific ACI. Either component or subcomponent under landers. I don't know that it was ever debated here to do that. We haven't got there yet. It certainly. Well, because how does this commission? Make any suggestion towards developing the ACI? I don't think that's within our. It's, I I mean, generically, it belongs in the land use landing. Where would you put that? I don't know. That's just it. I it certainly could be in in my mind. It could be a. Part of the discussion in the land use component. Talking about the ACI. Okay. And maybe that's where it belongs. I think it doesn't belong here. Yeah, this is talking about population and. Kind of an adjunct, so. Yeah, we first the ACI, but. Yeah, but that maybe strike this out of here and put it into the land. He says it's the entering paragraph in the land use component. I I don't know. I don't know that it doesn't belong here. Well, I mean, it's talking about the population and the need to kind of, it's a springboard off of the previous bullet.
Yeah.
Population density, boom, and the ACIs are gonna have to contend with that. Right? So, and then we can deal with it and. Specifically. Yeah. I I think we should come up with some model, you know, ideas. Okay, well, let's just focus on what we got here. We don't have a land use component. Yeah, you know. Are we all, are we good with this? Should we take that bullet out? I don't see why. Yeah, I like it. I think it's okay for it to be there because it. Yeah, it. It just takes the previous ballons. Because, you know, in the ACI, I mean, obviously our population statistics are. If the ACIs. Yeah, right, right. So. Alright, so any uh, are we okay with advancing this? Yeah, I think I asked for it. We we advertised it as such, so I'm sure we. We asked the Land Scotts and they didn't say anything, so. There are, there are public comment. You have any comment? You want to have? I'm not shy. Okay. Alright, are we good with advancing this to a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We'll do that. Got that, Jake?
Yep.
Alright, let's go to agriculture. And Jake, you have some information for us?
Yes. So under the data file, under full data, I'll trade and natural resources, I put. A subfolder of fine land statewide importance. This has been an ongoing discussion by the planning commission. On this fine land statewide importance is and has the state done what they needed to to adopt this, so. I reached out to. Three different individuals and heard back. So we have. A comment back from Lloyd Knight, who's the director, I believe. Plants. I don't want to mess this up, so give me a second. So he's the direct or administrator of Division of Plant Industries with the Idaho Department of Agriculture. He said he's been, to summarize what his his comment was is. So I sent him that. USDA Title four forty part five twenty three, which was. Some comments we received that there's a requirement to the state to adopt the final statewide importance. Um, prior to becoming essentially effective within the state, so. He had reached out to his counterparts from USDA and NRCS. Um, both Curtis Elick and. And he's the state conservationist. And Sean Neil, he's the state soil scientist who's works for Curtis. Um, and they essentially determined between the three, then that the state has nothing left to do. So they confirmed that there is isn't anything for the state to do. Um, so then I reached out to both of those individuals from NRCS. Um, and got a comment back from Sean Neil. Who kind of gave a timeline. These are, all these emails are in your guys' files for your review as well. Um, stated that. That that part five twenty three. Uh, is a policy but not a regulation and then set the regulation. I downloaded that regulation. It's part four or six fifty seven. It's also in that same file. And that's the regulation. It doesn't have any requirements for the state to adopt, so. That's coming down from NRCS. That's kind of.
Yeah, I think that's what we call. Negative pregnant. So something, I don't know what it is.
Talked about how there was state agencies involved during the nineteen seventies and eighties when the finalized statewide importance criteria and all. Analysis was being done. See, the concert conservation commission, which I think morphed into the. Soil water conservation commission, which is the state agency. Um, that was involved during all of that analysis. They met on a regular basis. Yeah.
The Jake, the file that's called important farmland criteria. Is that, where did that come from? It's a list of very detailed technical criteria.
So, so the last comment I got back was from Cindy Lewis, who worked for USDA locally, I think Bonner's Ferry. So she said a bunch of other documents and I included all those.
And that's the one she sent?
Most of those, any technical documents was sent by her as the criteria for finding that statewide importance and.
Which one was that?
It's in under Ag, there's a folder called data, uh, under.
Right, I'm there. Which file were you just referring?
Uh, important. I have to go back and see what it's.
Oh, and our CS prime and other important.
No, it's called important farmland criteria.
Oh, I don't see that.
There there's a, there's a file called.
Under data?
Yep.
So data and then final statewide importance.
Oh, okay.
There's one called prime farmland criteria. Which is a similar list of. Detailed technical characteristics. And then there's an important farmland criteria, which is clearly related to Idaho because it talks about. Certain criteria that only apply in certain areas of the state, not other areas of the state. So it's very specific to Idaho. I I my question, my next question would have been, where did that list of criteria come from? Who defined it? Was that NRCS or was that some or was somebody in the state involved? But it is specific to Idaho. That's very clear. You read it, it's, it says, for example. Soil south of Idaho County must be irrigated. Additionally, some gravelly soils in Cooney and Bonner counties also must be irrigated. So I mean, it's very specific to Idaho. This is not some national criteria.
What is the importance of that? I mean, what if it's not irrigated? That means it's not.
Then it's not important farmland, is what I would. I would guess. These are the criteria for saying it's it's important farming. Which I'm inferring that's maybe the same as soils of statewide importance, but.
All this is good research and stuff, but the key word that NRCS came up with was. The states must adopt it. Where is this adopted document? Does it exist? Did they go through some legislative action or the Department of Agriculture was supposed to do it? And their working documents and their whatever they are. Is there some adoption of Idaho's farmland of statewide importance?
So I sent this document, so you were talking about it. So it's part five twenty three, right?
Yeah, this is, this is USDA. Out of code of federal regulation. It, we've looked at this a number of times and it says.
So. From what I got back from the NRCS and Boise words, that this is a policy, not a regulation.
If it's policy, it shows up in IDAP. Idaho administrative procedures. No, but it's not it. No, they're saying it's that it would be a. Would be a federal regulation. No, it is. No, it is, but it says right there that the state has to adopt it. Every state, each state, the state government. Must designate. And and and, yeah, what's her name coming, Bonner's Ferry said. That it was adopted. Where? Uh, did you say that?
She she did. She said it all happened back in the seventies.
Seventies and it was adopted in the nineties or something.
When we ask Department of Ag, they don't have any record of that.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It it's so it's ever. I doubt that it made it into the Administrative Procedures Act. Which is where rules are, rules of engagement for all the departments. So I don't know. No, it's just this. And beyond that. The work was done in the seventies and maybe to the nineties. But. Has it been brought forward to today's present GIS environment and so forth? So that you can make. A map like. We've got other maps. Argue about all the time. About their sufficiency. This is what started this whole thing because of those maps that. Knows if they're up to date or. Geographically correct. So you're, so.
So he's stating here that, so we have conflicting state regulation or federal regulation, right? So we have. One part four twenty three that says one thing. We have another part six fifty seven. That says that it's up to the state conservationists. Right, this is his responsibilities. Or their their responsibilities.
What, is in there, look at this link that she has in this.
That's what, that's what I have here. It's downloaded. It's seven CFR on six fifty seven, so I downloaded it so enough to pull the link.
I have a question. In that seven or six fifty seven, I can be up there. Was it go on and. Is it an instance? I'm going to see my influence in that. This kind of veteran should give you one, if I may, continue, sir.
Sure.
Kind of see the website. Says, um. The criteria for defining and delineating. Farmland statewide forms are determined by the appropriate state agencies. And I don't have that. Oh, I have a. Website address. That's why, that that's why that led me to go ahead and ask the public. That criteria for defining and delineating. The term by the perfect stage, that's what I was after, you know, public record. And so we haven't done it.
At least not recently, but the crew that's there now.
The first person I reached out to is the Soil Water Conservation Commission, and they had no idea what I was talking about. Into NRCS USDA, so.
Well, and then that emails I have with Lloyd, like you said, I've never even heard that come before.
You know, he told me the same thing.
Yeah.
You know, prior to your inquiry, he never even heard of what that is, so.
So where are we? When he says that there's nothing further for the state to do.
I think this is all in our, I read six fifty seven. It's all NRCS responsibility.
That's what I say too.
It says, A, state conservationist, each NRCS state conservationist is two, and then it goes on and provides a whole list of. Look at the soils, do the mapping, put them in categories. That's NRCS.
Don't be confused with that. It's the NRCS estate conservation.
Yes, right, right, exactly.
Yes, it's person in Idaho who's responsible.
Right.
Every state has one. Or more. And then it's their responsibility. Then they're supposed to take all this and work it out with with the local jurisdiction. Because I read in one place there where it says. For decision making purposes. I can't find it now. It's not, okay, so.
I think that's all NRCS's responsibility.
Right.
This is six fifty seven point four.
Yep. So here's right there, number five. That state conservationist was to. Go to the local. Entities and get into this. But it's conservation districts of representative local agencies. This review is to determine that additional farmland should be identified to meet local decision making needs. Which is how it ended up in the contract. So somewhere, when I read, when I read Mr. Knight's letter, I mean. He's right in that there's nothing that compels the state to do anything.
Yes.
So. They have.
Yeah.
So there is no Idaho. So soil of statewide.
No, NRCS established them.
They never did anything.
It's not clear to me that they have to. Degree through six fifty seven point four. This is all things that NRCS staff does. And that includes.
Doesn't mean that they're they're not binding on the state unless the state. It's a code of federal regulations, not a code of state regulations. And the whole sensitivity, it reflects.
Well.
Go to the locals.
Binding on the state in this case. This is, it's technical information. About the characteristics of the soils in the state. It's all it is, right? Some soil scientists did a review and they looked at all the soils and they measured. Salinity and pH and all these other things. And based on their criteria, they said, you know, here's some soils that fit in this category. And here's some soils that fit in that category. And here's some soils that fit in that category. It's it's basically, it's a scientific process. It's up to us to decide if we think that information is useful or not. Is that useful information for our purposes or is it not useful information for our purposes?
And apparently it was because it was. Well, I don't know that it, is it, is it important? It's a useful and important for.
Well, I I think in a county, in a rural county, where if you look at what the. Five comp uh, subarea plan said, where. Those subarea plans all expressed the desire to maintain the rural character and to maintain. I'll I'll just use words, the agricultural heritage of the county. I'll I'll just use words, the agricultural heritage of the county. When it comes time for us to talk about land use designations and zoning designations. I think characteristics of the soil and their suitability for agricultural purposes may be a criteria. That we might want to consider. Not necessarily. The defining character criteria, but or or the determinative criteria, but it may be a criteria that we might might want to consider along with others. When we when we make land use designations. The zoning designation eventually. I don't know. I mean, it is today in the current complaint and the current code. There are is for certain land use designations and certain zoning designations, soil soils of prime, particularly soils of of. Prime farmland is is a criteria that is sometimes a factor.
What was the other term that they used?
Unique farmland. Which we don't apparently have any.
Yeah.
It was prime statewide importance and unique. And I don't see that they didn't. They didn't identify any unique in farmland.
So this this whole thing is.
If there isn't any, if the state hasn't designated. So. You know, this all started with whether or not we should include this map. And which I'm just not convinced.
If if we don't include it. Then my opinion is. Soil comes off the table. As far as being a criteria that we can use when it comes time to talk about land use designation. And my personal opinion is I think that would be a mistake. We don't have to use it, but if we don't include it, I don't think we can.
Does what if what? Well, I don't think there's any argument. That maybe we should have a map that shows friend sometimes. But the issue is whether or not we need to have this other category.
statewide importance. Yeah. Because it does show up in a couple of the definitions as they presently exist. For the complan designation for the zoning. Descriptions. Yeah. So that's where it all came from. So I'm thinking. Back in the seventies, when the first complaint could just all the way back to the first. This stuff was on the table. It was being discussed as as the lady from Bonner's Ferry acknowledged. It was developed in the seventies, lots of discussion. Good discussion. And whether it was adopted by the state or not, I don't know, but it was there. So it was incorporated in the top plan. As a good indicator of farmland. And that specific. Classification category, whatever you call it, was also included. But now we're. Thirty years later going, why? And is it valid? And is that map still accurate? So that that's what raised the question. So we got to figure it out. Does the state of Idaho? And maybe for for working through this even here in this part. What soil classifications has the state? Should that be a more valid?
It doesn't appear that they've adopted this category of statewide importance.
No, right. So what happened? Should be just included with the state of Idaho that has designated as soil types. All the way across the board. I mean, at one point I used to think that the state adopted this each county's little survey done by NRCS. Or SCF at the time. I thought that was the case, but maybe not. I never. I actually never challenged it, never looked into. I used to use that soil survey book all the time. It's good information. But. Yes, it is a common.
What's it's not only that, but as you look at that massive order is prime farm management shows sixty six thousand acres. But if you look in. Our current natural resources. This information came from USDA NRCS. We have a list of seven soils in there, two, three, four, five, seven soils in there that we categorize as prime farm. You add all those up and it's like really close to sixty six thousand acres. However. It's like, again, this information came from NRCS USDA. And it's in our natural resource. Says the only map you must meet the requirement for prime farmland. When irrigate.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so now all of a sudden, it they say we have sixty six thousand acres of all prime farmland. However. Why was it when we adopted this in two thousand and seven?
It was two thousand and two, either two or seven.
Why at what at that point was that non-prime farmland? Period without any caveats when you're. And then the problem that I have also. That we have a list and there are non-prime farmland, again, from USDA ICS. And we have several including Almyro Longy Sand and Barso Long. Those are categorized as non-prime farmland. However, this new publication, I gone ahead and dug a little deeper and all those areas down, so with thirty three thousand acres, just in those two sold. Are all prime farmlands. So we have adopted prior says, no, they're not buying. All of a sudden they are. I don't know. I don't know.
So so I just glanced today because I I didn't have a whole lot of time before the meeting, but if you look at the. There's a version of our existing natural resources section online. And the lady from NRCS made a lot of comments. On those soil designations. Now, why they changed from what was about to back when and what she's saying today. I don't get that because me soil soil and I'm not your state. We haven't had any major upheavals here, but. But it seemed like she had a lot of comments, specifically a soil type by soil type by soil type. About this is now this, and this should be over here. I I I didn't have time to absorb it all, so.
Is that? Well, right by that.
Well, it was in our folder. In the natural resources folder. So this is not the ag component. And by the way. I would also advocate that this information really should be in the natural resources component, not in the I component. But that's a different question. But it's in the natural. She she apparently got a hold of our current. Complain natural resource component and made a lot of comments to it.
And so that that is on.
So now our planning commission drive.
Oh, okay.
So I don't think it's available. I don't I don't think so.
It's it's in the is the existing complaint.
But but with her. Not with her comments, right? You have to.
The letter that she sent back. She her comments. And her comment was. Soil scientists have done a whole lot more research and lab work on the soils and what they are. Plus, I don't think she acknowledged it, but other people are acknowledging. We're changing soil characteristics because of drought. Big time. I don't know how you know back to that. It's such a contentious.
You have to use the best information you have on the table at times.
Well, yes, so. Um, yeah, well, so I think I think we make a good suggestion today that move this. Classification issue. International resources.
Uh, that's to me where it belongs.
I think if you're already dealing with it, natural resources, we shouldn't be dealing with it here.
Yes.
Because as as you all know, they're they're not going to be the same. And agriculture. It is the working of the land.
Right.
Not what the land is.
Right, right.
So. And let's take this this chart and start out. And.
But but now that said, after I went and looked. This briefly at natural resources, that that thing I said, oh, there's a lot more work that has to be done here to understand what the heck is going on. Because I kind of agree with you. I don't I don't know why it's different. I I would like to have I would like to have a better understanding of that. Um, and. If we're going to put it in here, we need to make sure we understand what it is and what we're doing.
Do you want to hold this component again?
And I I think if we pulled the soil info out of Ag. And agreed we're going to address that in natural, we haven't done natural resources yet. Am I correct on that? Yeah. I I think. Then I think we can put Ag forward. In my opinion, I think we pulled the soil.
Other changes, if we take that out, are there other changes in here that we need to make?
I would I would I would want to take a bit of time to go through it. I don't think so, but I would want to take a bit of time to go see that.
All right, why don't we just hold it over? And, you know, we'll take it out. I mean, even right there, that that paragraph right there talks all about USDA. Census of.
Well, that's different. That's different. All that info in that table. Came from the USDA census.
But that's that's crops and livestock. That's the use of the land for agriculture. It it does talk about soils up there, prime ag seed, prime ag land and so forth.
Yeah, it's just and I think it's just a kind of a summary level. A which probably shouldn't be in there. If we're going to if we're going to address it over in.
Right there, forty seven thousand acres of soil that can be classified as farm by apartment.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, now with the with the understanding, we're going to deal with this at natural resources, I think. That's going to be the 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 twist because. No point in us. One group says prime farmland, the other says prime soils. Prime farmland soils. Well, is it? Farm land or farmland soils? What are you discussing? I think again, ag is the use of the land, use of the soils. Well, there's statistics here regarding the use of that. So right. So that's that's appropriate. I'm just. Trying to make sure there's no words in there that still refer back to a soil.
NRCS, if you look at. Again, look at part six fifty seven. It says prime and unique farmlands.
Farmland, no. Stay by everyone's not soils. No, soils, farmland, are they are they saying? No.
Well, I don't know. I'd have to read this. Well, I bet they are. I bet they're just my guesses. They're sloppy in the way they use their terminology, but.
Yeah, also note here, um, Dave, that if you go down to the bottom, it says page four of eighty six, page one of eighty six. I don't think we got eighty six pages. Was that thing eighty six pages long?
No, no.
And maybe the old one was.
Oh, yeah, I bet the old one was.
Yeah, I think it worked. This was like eight. That's why I would just change that. Down the bottom.
Okay.
All right. Could we take any other public comments?
Maybe I have a question. Um. Regarding her district.
I'm sorry, say again.
First first districts. Um, and I there was no mention that I remember I briefly discussed a bit, you know, several sub community. But all there. It would surely nice to have signage. For our district. And moving in the range. And I got you doing some research and and we got while we have her district, it's never. Um, as far as I know. Uh, Dylan's supposed to in regards to town guards fence. And Mike, if it's a good place, John, what do you think on? Her districts elimination there or addressing in a comprehensive plan for signage for the county. It's. It's kind of like pulling teeth. I went to reading a couple of years ago. And about it like to ITV that it's kind of ironic, you can see this big highway of signs we work turtle crossing at ball first. And we can't get over the rain signs. Or her where the her district and south of Long Beach. And as in my mind.
There's one on Sagal Road.
Yeah, I know. And they appeared in the time that I they appeared in the time that I lived here.
Yeah.
They weren't here when I moved here. So it's within the last seven years.
Open range just went up in the last three years.
Yeah.
So we don't have the mission graph, probably get up actually right just south of Brisbane Hills. It's where it starts when sound and there's supposed to be the caliber across the highway. And it's supposed to be dense. And so therefore, if they don't have the money to put it with a open range sign, they certainly don't have the money to do. County expense for code allows for the elimination of their districts that is insufficient for control. I would argue it's insufficient for control. And for. Comprehensive plan, if the county cannot and will not report the money. To do what you're supposed to.
Is that the county's purview to do that?
Yes, the county's purview, yeah. It's a. Liberation or district that's insufficient to county. Um, or kind of pressure shall have power to establish such control orders provided across construction and maintenance of any fancy or cattle roads. Whoever said, shall be paid out of county during the streets.
There's there's so many things that are that should be county policy. But not necessarily the land use policy.
But and I didn't know this is a land use thing.
Yeah, I don't I don't see what it is. Because it. Again. If it's a land use policy, but somebody is going to say. If you're going to develop this, you shall do this. That's my news code. What what? How could how could her district? Be required to do. Yeah. So I don't think it fits in the land use code. Or complain and then use planning. But again, so many things that. The county does have. Many items that are pure county policy. County policy on this is we shall do this or I do this and that's separate from land store. So, yeah, maybe we can get some of that done. In future sessions.
You say you have open range signs down Sagal Road?
You go out Sagal Road and also on Camp Bay Road.
Yes.
There are open range signs that just showed up.
There are open range signs on fifty seven.
I know there are. Yeah, but you were also where you have a pushback out. You've got.
And I outgores cross side fifteen. Wow.
South of the bus pass.
All right, and Ida. What are you suggesting? You do a visit for him.
I don't know. I didn't know that it was a landing session. I didn't know if there's anything you can do. And I don't know it's in a comprehensive plan for the county. To address in the future.
And it's not.
It's not an individual land use policy.
Yeah, that's the thing. It's. We need a whole county policy thing. Why did I put the signs? Look at the bridge. After the sign.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, they're very official looking signs.
Yeah, I they are. I talked to them and they said.
They.
They don't have a good buddy. I'm like. At noon o'clock today. Was I listening volume of me as a voice and you still have over a billion dollar surplus of. We got turtle signs.
That's important because they don't move very quick.
I guess.
All right, well. Dave is going to fix this thing.
So I'll deal with the soils. Uh, do we think? We need to address her districts in here or not?
All right. All right. So that's the end of the public comment section, although. You pretty much. Occur on any of these things. So we don't have housing, uh, so let's go to economic development. I had some comments on that. Okay, so my first comment. Was the demographic characteristics you've got is not consistent with the population. You got Bonner County at forty four thousand. The census data has it at forty seven.
Okay.
All all these percentages are on.
I didn't look. Did. Did you have all of this data categorized this way?
No.
In in population. Okay.
A lot of it. I mean, some of this, some of it's a different way, but. Yeah, it's there. It is. I think you'll find it there.
Okay. I'll make it consistent.
The. Oh, yeah. And then when you get down to. Establishments by number of employees and so on. And we were citing to a economic study of twenty fifteen.
Not that I could find.
Really?
Yeah. And and this was this was not put out. By the. The state. I I got some data from um. A little study, I guess, that the state put out that that Jake found.
What about the Department of Labor? Is that where you're looking?
Yeah, it's by the Department of Labor. Um, and then. And I've kind of got all the data that they had in here. And then I was looking around for some other information and I found that there's there's an organization. Uh, based out of Missoula. That does this kind of work. Around the inland Northwest and they had a study that they had done. I don't know why they did it, but they had a study that was done in fifteen specifically about Bonner County. It was actually very interesting. I thought.
I think it's interesting. I it seems like it should be. You know, we're twenty twenty three. That's eight years old.
Yeah, yeah. I understand, but. No, I can't find. I I haven't found any other more recent info. On that. The 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 what came from Idaho Department of Labor focused a lot on on, I mean, this table came from Idaho Department of Labor. Of labor. So it gives you the big employers. Right, top ten employers. What I liked about that other table that was from fifteen. And I mean, I mean, it's old. What I liked about that other table that was from fifteen, and I mean, I mean it's old, but it. It gives you more info on smaller employers. Which make up. Frankly, make up the bulk of the county's town. So.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with.
And the other thing that was interesting to me.
Seems like it's, it's it's so dated that it's almost.
I don't think believer and use the best day. I have to go with it to study to clarify. Okay, so. No, it's the number of employers. In that case, so what this table is also distinguishing is companies that focus on selling their products and services within the county. Versus employers that focus on selling their products and services predominantly outside the counties. Because you think about it from an economic point of view, we face some challenges in that respect, right? Because when apart from airport, all those kind of normal things, so that was the distinction that they were trying to draw there. I haven't been able to get the guy who wrote the Department of Labor blurb we were looking at to respond to my questions.
So. In the census data, there's some information. But only kind of like percentages.
Where are you talking about?
Uh if you go down and their population of their economy. Got the civilian labor force.
Oh, in your population section?
Yeah. I don't know if that's helpful for you or not. That we got, I've got a a section on businesses. Old employer established once twenty twenty. It seems like that might.
It could, it could. I didn't want to get into this.
It's got total annual payroll five hundred seventeen thousand. So the, you know, the. The Census Bureau puts out a lot of information. Particularly, I mean, I just print this because it was, that's all part of that report. We might take a look at that.
Good.
Yeah, Debbie Yella.
Yeah, I had a couple of comments um. On page. Nine. Chapter five. The paragraph that starts out saying the primary challenge that we address in this plan is to establish objectives and policies. But then in the last sentence, it says, but these would likely fall outside the domain. And therefore would not be addressed in this plan, so I would propose getting rid of that. Not quite sure what the purpose of that paragraph would be.
So the.
Are you where I am?
I am, I I am, the. The comment that about falling outside the domain of land use policy. Was specifically relative to broadband internet and educational attainment of the workforce.
Well, I would think that everything in that paragraph is out of the jurisdiction of the county. I mean, how does the county address the rising costs of commercial and residential real estate?
Supply. County control of supply.
Yeah, I don't know, I I I. I can kind of see the point you're trying to make, but to me that paragraph just feels. Like it contradicts itself would be concert the role of. It was just how I read it.
Well, so I I don't know, the first sentence is pretty clear, could be addressed in this complex. Rising costs of commercial and residential, and I think the land use policy drives supply for some extent, and supply drives.
Well, where do you want to address it though?
In land use and house.
So this could be the springboard into land.
Right, land use and housing, that's that's where we, that's kind of where the rubber meets the road anyway, mainly.
Theoretically, the land use component say, as was mentioned in the economic section.
Right.
We need to do this, therefore boom.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I didn't like the paragraph.
I I I think I think the reason um why you include broadband, I think was because.
They did, but the main reason actually I I did it is this, I got this table out of that same study that I talked about. Um that this outfit in Missoula did.
Yeah.
And and they identified strengths and weaknesses.
Yeah.
Of the county, and they resonated with me, they made sense to me when I read them. Uh and they had more detail that I didn't include here, obviously, but and and they listed internet and educational attainment.
How would this county address the availability of broadband?
This county is not gonna do what other counties have done and be a provider.
Yeah. Um I think there are many ways they could, but it's not a land use policy issue.
No.
So it's not, doesn't belong in a complex, but I I just measured it there because it was in the table.
Yeah, I mean, hardly anything in the table. Is gonna end up being a land use code. Something that's gonna be imposed on somebody to do because you need to get out from under the economic stress of the county.
Yeah, I did, I mean, anything else I say would be redundant, so um. On page ten, chapter six, where you're talking about the suburb it lands. Point number five, one, two, three, four, five.
All your life, reiteration.
Yeah, I probably was. In my notes, I know that it's contradictory, but now I need to really. Reference to business development, or I, I don't know, every time. This is something I struggled with so much on the Sub area committee that I was on, every time the word rural was used. It just was so nonspecific and.
We were, we we had a whole page where Sagal Sub area plan defined what we meant by that.
How long did it take you to write that, a year?
At least, I was gonna say six months. Um but. It's interesting because that's kind of what I was referring to there, and what was interesting is when I read this other study from. Can't think of the name of the company. Yeah. They talked about that. And they they we talked about it that quite quite some length, that one of the strengths we have is that people are committed to living here. And through past times of economic challenge. People haven't just left, they've figured out ways, they've built their businesses, they've figured out ways to stay here, and I think that is an economic strength of the county. As long as people want to, are that are that committed to live here, and why are they committed to live here? It's because of quality of life, it's the rural character, it's things like that, so. They specifically talked about when um. When Paul were creeping. That that was. Not as long, but but the impact of that didn't last as long as it would have in many other places. Because people are committed to find other ways to to stay here and. Early.
Okay, now that you explain it more, I think I understand the point that's made in there, and then on page eleven. Following our economic development policies we recommended, I I'm not quite sure who we is.
We. Those are the economic policies we put forward in our goals, 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 objectives and policy document, I just put them here for reference. Because I believe. These components should lead to those policies.
Oh, so this is, this isn't included in.
No.
This is just.
And they're included here for reference only.
Okay, okay, well I.
As I was writing, and I just wanted to make sure that it hangs together.
Okay, okay. So that's just kind of for our information only, okay, that's not, if we submitted this, that would. I wasn't clear on that. I didn't know if I was part of that week.
You were.
Okay, so we're gonna. Kind of cross reference.
I think the main thing is to make it consistent, the data consistent with what we did in population.
Right, and there might be some other economic stuff that might be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, and if you if you could get some more current info. When I, when I go to the census website.
I think that would be really helpful to get that. Eight years.
Yeah.
There's a whole training, training course. No, none of it's intuitive, none, never has been, never will be.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see if there's any, there any public comment on.
This one's not opening up a color.
What the heck?
He knows there won't be any, so.
Okay. Alright, so that's all the, okay, so.
Was there, what ones are we gonna do next?
That's what you're gonna discuss. We all, we have some to be assigned. We have housing to be assigned. We could wait for a new commissioner and then on that.
We have, I think, public services, facilities, utilities, I think that was. Mr. Coach as well, we haven't got anything on that. I think it's those two. So I haven't pulled up on the screen here, I don't know, make it weird, yes, yeah.
Okay, so actually, we've done, we've done things out of order here, so. I know. Oh, this isn't the list where we have the assignments.
Oh, no, this is.
But what do we have? No, we haven't, but. We have land use, natural resources, natural resources. Public services and facilities. That's all we have, lots.
Yeah, and and use.
There's some pretty big components. Cast on the ball to the end. Alright, well, so we've got public services and housing that are currently on the side.
I think we might want to break up. So we just got um. Natural resources back from Commissioner Rita. Uh we might want to break up that in the chapters for people to review, it's it's a beast, it's a really big document. It's not gonna be ready by next meeting. Uh for first look, so. It might be worthwhile to to have different commissions, I think it's five chapters, but I take a look at, you know, one chapter each. Drafted up, I don't think.
I looked, I looked a little bit at what um what he done, and a lot of us, I talked to Swami about this earlier. He's just asking the staff.
Yeah, we we sent him a decent chunk for the chapter one stuff, which is what we had received back in November. I guess he had done a full look back in October, November, he just, we emailed, he got emailed everything. We've been waiting, so I got a hold of him last week and asked him for the documents, so we just started this week, so.
We don't have anything.
There's not, like I said, there's not gonna be enough data to take a first look at it by next month. Anyways. And there will be a decent amount of public involvement on this one as well, we've had. Numbers comments of the commissioner hearing on natural resources, so I hope we get some public comment here, gather them, they wait till the last minute of the mission.
Well, so those, those three components have not even.
Correct, you know, these, these three, natural resources, public services, facilities and housing. None of them have been drafted, retrieved away from that, meaning they're all fairly big components, so.
So, so Mike has.
Like that's natural.
Natural resources, but Josh had the other two, Josh should be correct.
If I understand it right, agriculture, we want to leave. For some more changes before we do our hearing on it, right? It's not ready.
Finish bring it back.
Okay, so we'll bring it back next meeting under public comment workshop.
Public comment workshop.
And then we airports and population, we'll do a a hearing on the twenty first.
Correct.
Yeah, it's too soon to get it on the seventh, but we can get it by February. Um but then it's those three. Yeah.
So we have anything else that's, we're not, we don't have anything else that's ready for.
Well, we we've dropped economic development, right? So I have some changes to make there, but the next step would be. A review with public comment.
Right.
So we'll do that, I can. Put it on, I can, I can get those updated by the seventh, but I won't be here. So that's, that's okay with me, if you guys want to go ahead.
We like to get them uploaded on the website to give people time to to review it. And hopefully provide good comments prior to getting here, the last thing, we don't like to put it last minute, say, oh, we uploaded it yesterday, what are your comments, right?
Well, ag is pretty easy, I think I can get that one in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Economic development, to some extent, it's it's dependent on if you can get some additional data. So. Maybe we should move that out.
Or actually, well, is it gonna be extensive changes so that we have to look at it again without public comment?
Yes, we, if we look at it by the seven, we get a draft people for them for their permission review.
Then kick it over to. Well. So, public facilities and nobody's, nobody is really volunteering for those two components.
Well, it it's interesting. When I first got on the Planning and Zoning Commission in two thousand fifteen. The commission was two years into updating the housing department.
We do have a draft.
Yeah, there is. And.
I don't know.
Yeah, I know, and it's it's.
It was a two thousand fifteen draft that was never adopted, I don't remember.
Right, it was not adopted because we were still grappling with what to do with it and what should include, and it was. It was two thousand fifteen, yeah. It was rife with all kinds of stuff, plus the fact that it it didn't, it didn't deal with just unincorporated county, it dealt with the whole county. And that was a huge bone of contention with a number of the commissioners. So, in what way? This is a unincorporated Bonner County document. You can reference the other. You can reference the other stuff by comparison, but what do we do with? With housing in the unincorporated county? That's what it's supposed to address.
You're looking at housing stock in the county that includes bits of the cities.
This document applies to the area.
Understand, but when you're looking at the county, the cities are in the county.
Well, why aren't the rest of these, why don't we talk about natural resources and sampling, and, and, no, we're, we're, we're double faced here.
But, but you're, but if you're dealing with what kind of housing needs or whatever are in the county. To ignore what's in the city.
I'm not saying ignore.
Okay.
It was not, it was just taken as one and there was no differentiation.
Why don't you take housing?
I, I would like to.
Okay, you got it. Now we just get that, get rid of, got it rid of public services.
Also, that's, that's an interesting one, if you look, take a look very quickly at the code, it's sixty five eighty. Requirement for public services. It, it doesn't, it comes across if I remember right, it's a list. We go there to get the uh. Take code up, we've got it here somewhere in one of our. Where we do, where is it?
How much time do you think you'll need to draft up housing?
Oh. I wouldn't wanna, well, that's two weeks to the seventh.
There were three weeks, yeah.
I'll take a stab at it. I can always move it.
You don't have it ready, we don't have it ready, but let's put it on her.
Yeah, okay. So sixty five four eight.
Here's state code right here.
Yeah, and. So if you look at uh inch, there's a H. Yeah. Analysis showing general plans for sewage, drainage. Power plant sites, utility transmission corridors, water supply, fire stations, this is all urban stuff. No, it isn't.
Well, fire, we have, we have fire stations.
We have fire stations, we have fire stations, we have sewer districts.
Schools. Uh, public safety, what is, what is that like?
I don't know.
Like DMS.
Is it, I, I was gonna say that.
Well, I, in our case, it might be, and it talks about schools again. Already covered schools. And location of civic centers and public buildings. I mean, it's, yeah, and what's in the plan now is this giant list of everything in the entire county. That ever existed, all the way back to the schools that were held in, selling. You know, it's just, yeah.
This is showing plans for sewage, drainage.
Our plans for sewage, there are none. For drainage, there are none.
Or supply.
Power plant supplies, there are none. Plans for utility transmission corridors, they're already here. That, that plans for, there's no semi-colon, so those are all adjunct to general plans for. Water supply, fire stations. It's a weird. It's a weird setup.
Locations for civic centers and public buildings, yeah, I mean.
There are no plans.
There are no public plans in the unincorporated county for those things.
Is this, is this anything more than. A, based a map or a series of maps that identifies where these things are currently?
Is that the plans for those things?
Well, also, I think. I think it is, because the plan is that, that we use the ones we have, and there's no plans to build any other ones.
Yeah, you, you could ask for like, uh, a, a good one is solid waste disposal, right, so we talked to, where all the solid waste collections. We have solid waste, hey, do you have any plans to expand any of these, we just did a CUP last year, been expanding one of the sites and. Adding some additional, so, you know, what's the next step in some of these other locations, maybe we include some of that, that's one example. Uh, we can ask the water districts, what are your plans to expand, I know Sable Sewer is planning on expanding. One of their, um, drains, or one of their sewer treatment locations, so, and I think there are plans out there, right, that would affect land use. Yeah, most of those do.
We just did the CUP for the expansion. So yes, but I mean, since this is forward looking. Which is the, that's just, so what in the public services sector? Is gonna affect land use in the unincorporated county, okay?
So like, I think uh. Spirit Lake Fire District in there, they just established, um, a fee, right, for. Any, any new homes, that would be one that's forward looking, so what are they planning on doing with that, so we have a, a new section in our, it's comp plan, right, Swai? No, it's like zoning, though. I don't remember, the, the, uh, Spirit Lake Fire, North Side Fire, they adopted in there some capital improvement plans, right? So we can talk through some of those and what expansion that they're planning on doing as they receive those funds in the next ten years.
Which are already a component in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, but, I mean, we can put it in here as part of our analysis, right? This, this is one component, that doesn't say an analysis of, it just says, drop all your plans together, it almost looks like.
It says, an analysis showing general plans for, that's, that's double time.
It doesn't mean we can't do an analysis of it. It means we should include all these things, right?
Yeah, well, to the extent that it's forward looking, then, you know, we don't, I don't have that information.
Well, we can. But we can acknowledge it, right? I think, we, we can acknowledge it, if this is forward thinking, forward looking, I think at least acknowledging it for the future, uh, commission. You know, is, is, is at least the first step in tackling this, getting this. And. So, I mean, we can send it, an email out essentially asking for all the different. Public, you know, utilities and service providers, say, hey, what, what do your plans look like? That we can include in our comp plan and then see what we get back. We can talk to different, you know, departments here that might have, you know, like road invasion, if you want, right? Or solid waste is a good one, emergency services, um, you know, Bob Howard. So I know they're doing some work on establishing some stuff for the emergency services side. Yeah.
We can go to Panhandle Health, I guess, and get the permits. Percepted, and then we also need the sewer districts. The only sewer districts there are, I know there's five, I think, and we say, yeah, there's about twenty.
I know, Coolwood Sewer, I'm sure they're working through some kind of future plan, I don't know if it's, it's all together, because they've been doing. More touring for the last, you know, year or so, so they have to have some kind of plan in progress to. You know, what are, what are the next steps that just stop, right?
It's Calistel, Alas, Grant a reader. Are you gonna send an email to each of those?
Yeah, yeah, we can send out an email, I think we have contact information for most of those, we send out the agency comments. And just request for, hey, this is what we're doing, please provide, you know, anything you have. Essentially put it in the data file and relay it accordingly and all that. Whoever gets assigned this file, I know as we get these contacts.
Yep, okay, uh, well, if you can do that, I'll take as bracket, devising.
Yeah. So that's probably won't be ready in the next three weeks, I would give that a little bit more time.
Alright, well, we're gonna, we're gonna pretty short meeting on seven.
It might be, yeah.
Alright, well, let's do that.
So economic development and housing. Agriculture and then nothing for.
Alright, so the other thing we had to do on the seventh is we need to have a vice chair.
Yeah, we're gonna add that to the agenda.
Okay. I'm not gonna be here on the twenty first.
Basically, we better get those student commission.
We've been advertising since November and we only received two applicants, so. Yeah, for. Better, better position, yeah.
So we got, we know what we're gonna do for the next meeting.
I think we got it.
Um, be sure you put on there the vice chair.
She's got on the agenda, the only other thing I wanted to mention was, um. I would recommend at least one, um. At least somebody to attend the, any, any board meetings on these, um. Just, yes, especially if you worked on this component. I would, I would really appreciate it from a staff perspective, to have somebody saying, because it almost feels like this is the staff initiated change. I explained the commissioner twice during the, during last week's meeting, like, this is probably a planning commission. It's like, well, why didn't, why wasn't this analyzer included, it's like, well. This isn't a staff decision, right, this is a planning permission document, we work on it and be essentially disseminate meetings, I kind of explained staff role in this. Um, but it felt kind of like it. It, it would be nice to have a little backup from the planning commission.
When are the next thing they're gonna consider?
Yeah, so there's a, a public workshop on February. Nine, yeah, nine, nine for the hazardous areas and special areas of sites.
There's, there's one more too.
Yeah, oh, and community design. So those three, uh, so what I've decided moving forward, because this commission or the bidding board is, is new, right, two, two thirds of them are. Um, is to hold a, a workshop before going to a hearing, so we'll, we'll kind of explain as, if we can have you there to explain it. Um, would be great, and I'll, I think what we'll do is make sure you guys get noticed when those are, um, when those get scheduled. And then, then we'll do a hearing, but the idea with that is, when they get to the hearing, it's not the first time they're looking at it. Um, hopefully we've explained the change and why and whatnot, and if they have any proposed changes, they have it. Ready by that hearing so that we can schedule another hearing right away, rather than to the opposite of scheduling a workshop and another hearing, another day, so.
So this workshop's actually retroactive, because they already had technically their hearing, isn't that what that was last week?
There was a first hearing, it got continued to February twenty second. So in the meantime, I'm gonna do a workshop between the two hearings to, not to decide on it, but to discuss it. See what, then they can draft up a change, and then do a hearing.
Are they gonna allow public comment if it's?
It is up to the board, so. I think what they decided is, so there was a comment from Idaho Department of Fish and Game that.
Yeah, I watched the meeting, so, yeah.
So, yeah, for those that didn't, they, they had some conversation about wetlands and why it wasn't included. So, I mean, those meetings were back in. What, early December, and it took me a minute to remember why it wasn't included, and how did you guys review it? I believe you guys did talk about it, decided it should be in natural resources, so the mission. The, the board didn't quite agree with all that, so they wanted to get more input from other agencies. So I've, I pushed out an email trying to get some additional comments and, and then give time for public comment, additional public comment, so to think. There hasn't been enough, sorry, um, we had a couple of.
Public comments from the makes ocean and. Uh, item conservation, and we wanted to.
The lakes commission now has jurisdiction of the wetlands.
There was some general comments on slowing down the process and allowing for more public comment, more analysis needed, if I remember right, so. It's on YouTube.
All, all of which we've heard before, from the same people. Yeah. Uh, so anyway, um.
You maybe watched the meeting.
Yes, I, I was just gonna say. Just a suggestion, maybe you knew what the commission wants to. When someone stands up and they say they're with so and so, ask what their capacity is, which I don't know a lot about this mission. That person making comments is either a board, it's a staff. So she's, she was executive director. Yeah, it, it, it is, it, I doubt the comments actually came. A lake's mission.
I, I can almost guarantee you, they didn't.
Right. Trying to find out, you know, because when people make comments, they say, no offense, but if you get up and say, you know, Swai, people are counting planning. And, oh, she's representing the entire planning department, you gotta be very careful of that. Yeah, I know, I, 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 I hear you, I'm clear, but she does that all the time. You know, she, she signs letters to us. You know, on behalf of Lex, which I know that they have a ticket. Have you talked to, uh?
Yeah, or, I have a phone call before, my, I got a photo of, uh, Craig Hill. Uh, Mark Greenmeyer. Those are the two people I actually know. Who are on there, I have. Got any conversations.
I mean, that's one issue, you know, obviously, if they wanted to be noticed like a public agency, but no reason to do that. But, the other is, you know, what Matt's referring to, and that is, when she comes to the meetings and represents that. You know, the lakes commission said this, the lakes commission wants that, you know. She's not the lakes, she's just a employee. So.
If you can't be a person, if you can be online, that would be great, feel free to speak up.
Uh, I, I, I could try to be online, I, I'm not gonna be here, because I don't go back to the California and push yourself, but. I could probably, I, I was, I'll, I'll be on, I can be on the meeting at the twenty first, I'd assume.
Okay, twenty second. Just twenty first, yes, sorry, sitting here.
So I can be on the twenty second too, for.
The board meeting.
Yeah, but I'll make, only by, so, it's kind of hard to, uh. To get recognized.
I know it's not a perfect platform, but I believe it's still.
When Alan and I were watching the, the commissioners with the hearings last week. Were you, I, you probably didn't notice, but we, did you guys know we were in the Zoom meeting?
I don't, I don't run those.
Were you, were you on YouTube or Zoom? If you're on YouTube, then no, only if you're on Zoom do we see you for public comments.
Okay, I don't think I signed in the weather.
No.
No.
How were you watching it, Alan, were you on Zoom?
No.
So we were both on.
I wasn't one, I'm one of those things where you, you're actually.
So I, if, if you are wanting to go to the workshop you said on the night, that's the one that you said you presented to. I can just, I, I can send you an invite, and you just click on it, and it'll, and then you can do a public comment.
So. Yeah, let's make sure we get, we'll get this commission in agenda, that's gonna talk about anything you've recommended to the board, right?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We'll make sure we include the Zoom link, if you wanna participate via Zoom.
Yeah.
I would just like to have staff some backup as, and they said it three or four times, we wanna have respect for the planning, my commission, all the work they've done into this. But we wanna change X, Y and Z, or we want more input on that, so having some like. Backup incentives, like, hey, we, we spent time talking about this, we discussed it, here's why we decided not to, here's why we decided to advertise, there's something on this site.
So this is, but this is the workshop. With the whole board.
Correct, yeah, this is all.
Individual, right. Are they still, is she still going there?
I believe so. There was one commissioner that's gonna hold some individual. Individual workshops, and I.
That that seems legal?
I haven't talked to Bill about it, I'm, I'm sure she has, so.
Wouldn't be sure anyways.
Again, planning department hasn't been invited to any, like, individual commissioners. Workshops on.
Alright, so, anything else for the good of the cause? Alright, so we will, uh, adjourn this meeting, and we will have our next meeting on. At four thirty.